Good evening, I'd like to welcome you to this regularly scheduled meeting of the City of Greer Planning Commission. We'll call the meeting to order. Is there anyone on the board that will need to recuse themselves from any of the businesses going to be before us tonight? All right. This time we'll move on to the meeting minutes from our April 15th meeting of this year. I trust everybody's had a chance to review those. Do we have any additions, subtractions, discussion?
Move to approve.
Have a motion and a second for approval.
Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Lavender?
Yes.
Mr. Liam?
Yes.
Mr. Holland?
Yes. All right, we'll now move on to the public hearing portion of the meeting. During this time, we will open and close each of the matters that are before us tonight. We'll start with staff giving the basic information for the request, and then we will have the applicant come up here to the podium and state their name and address for the record. We are recording audio and video in this room. Speaker will come to the podium and give us a brief description of what they're wanting to do. After that has happened, anybody in the audience that would like to speak for or against that particular piece of business will be given the opportunity to do so. During that time, we'll want to hold your comments to three minutes, and we have a large crowd tonight, so if your neighbor has already said what you plan to say, we don't need to hear the same thing repeated two or three times. So if you'd like to pick a spokesperson perhaps, that would be acceptable and it keeps the meeting moving along. So at this time, we will open the public hearing for RZ 24-06.
Good evening, this is RZ 24-06. This is a rezoning for two parcels. The addresses are 538 Abner Creek Road and 180 Joe Leonard Road. The parcel ID numbers for the record are 9-07-00-039.06 and 9-07-00-039.00. The existing zoning of both parcels is rural residential, and the request is to rezone to traditional neighborhood. Here's the aerial of the parcel. Here's the zoning map. The subject parcel is currently zoned rural residential. The green is suburban neighborhood. The blue is DRD Design Review District, and the purple in the bottom corner is commercial corridor. That is where Pelham Medical Center is located. The future land use is suburban neighborhood, and here are photos of current conditions of both parcels. And that completes my presentation.
All right, do we have the applicant with us tonight?
Good evening, my name is Austin Allen. I am a planner with Arbor Land Design in Greenville. My address is 49 Greenland Drive, Greenville 29615. We are coming here in front of you tonight requesting a rezone of the two above parcels. This is a site that is located close to 14. It's close to the hospital, and there are several other developments around the site. Based off discussions with staff, the zoning that we are pursuing was discussed with them and agreed upon between us as a direction and them as a direction as well. We will be proposing 50 single-family detached lots on this property with a minimum lot size of 75 by 150, which comes out to a little bit above 11,000 square feet. The zoning that we are requesting tonight actually would suit, in addition to the zoning, the zoning and the property would suit and hold a much denser development. What we are bringing in front of you tonight is something that we believe is a high-quality product. I have with me tonight my client, the developer and the builder, Stone Ledge Properties. If you're unfamiliar, they've worked on La Jarden just east of this site. If you go to their website, you'll also see that they've built in Hollingsworth Park as well as Hartness. So based off that, we feel that this is a reasonable ask. We feel like this is going to be an appropriate development. It is going to suit the city well, and it will also enhance the corridor of Abner Creek due to the quality of the development that my client is going to produce. Just some site-specific things to kind of give you, knowing that we have not yet provided a site plan. We are showing at minimum a 20-foot buffer between proposed lots, units, and the external property line. That 20-foot buffer is actually a short section of the property. It only covers five or six lots. In other places, we're showing 44 feet from Joe Leonard Road, and then we are showing 50 to 60 along Abner and the creek and the wetland buffer on the other side of the property. We're not proposing any full access on the Joe Leonard Road. We will be proposing a emergency access only. It would be the intention of the engineer and the builder to not make that look like a access road, because we do not want people believing that it is an access. You know, we're trying to obtain a certain level of connectivity to the surrounding area, but Joe Leonard is not a suitable road to be putting traffic out onto. It is very narrow, and it would require improvements of my client. And quite honestly, a full access is not needed, but we'd like to make sure we can include that emergency access as well. With that being said, I will be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
That will come later.
Yep.
Thank you. All right, is there anyone here that would like to speak for or against RZ 24-06? Yes ma'am, your hand came up first. If you will come to the podium.
My name is Suzie Gartner Grant, and I live at 170 Joe Leonard Road. So our house is a little small corner up there at the top right, and it was my parents who actually purchased the said property. They purchased it in 1983 from Joe Leonard, who the name, the road was actually named after. My parents originally bought 27 acres, so they bought, including my property, the 180, 538, and the 590. So that was all 27 acres that they owned. Then in 1997, my parents decided to split off part of that property. And while we were on that property, we had horses, we had about five or six horses, we had a ring there, jumps, you know, I showed horses, and it was a wonderful place to grow up in, and, but they decided to sell off half of it because I went off to college, stopped riding, and they originally were going to separate the back 12 acres. It was like 12.2 acres, and that's what comprises 538 and 590. And my dad originally was going to split that up in four plots, and the restrictions at the time were going to be that it was 2,000-square-foot heated homes, no mobile homes, and it was intended that it stay residential suburban. And I think you all have changed the zoning, and now it's called rural residential. So what actually happened is that the property was divided into three plots, and it was sold to three members of the same family. One of those members is here, and she still owns a piece of that property. I think some other people will touch on some of the concerns we have with the traffic, with the density that the developers are proposing. I'm just afraid that it's going to change the look and feel of our property. Many of the people that bought their houses have bought it in the last 10 years, and they bought their properties that border this property here because they wanted to be able to look out at horses, to be able to look out at pasture, and not have to look in the backyard of somebody else's house. So that is why my husband and I, Joe Grant, we oppose this rezoning.
Thank you. All right, who else would like to speak for or against RZ 24-06?
My name is Doug Hammond. I'm their direct neighbors. We've been there since we bought our property there in 1985. We built in 89, and it's just the last few years, the way the property, the way the area has gone with the townhouse, well, first of all, they put the thing on 85, and it's made Abner Creek a throughfare for everybody in Simpsonville. I think cuts through there to get down and go around the hospital to, and use it as a shortcut, and even tractor-trailers are using it, and they're using the adjacent roads also. And it's just, I mean, you have to design your life around certain hours of the day or you basically can't get out or go anywhere. The whole feel, I always wanted my kids to inherit what we had, and they live in, up in New Jersey and come back, and she came in last week crying because she said, "You explained what the road, what it looked like with all the townhomes that's came in the last few years," but she said, "When I saw it," she said, "I couldn't believe what has already happened." And now to want to put, you know, 50 little lots and 50 homes, basically, I mean, the Joe's property is the only thing that's going to be separating me from that, and we're losing, you know, we're losing everything that we loved about it. We were already, but, you know, didn't like the way things were going, but we were kind of had a little niche in there that it still felt like country, still felt like the same a little bit, but now, I mean, we had a thing across the street where they were wanting to do that, basically the same thing there, and now this has gone a lot further, and it's just, you know, it's just, everybody that's been there a while is just ruining it for us. The wildlife, we had two groups of deer we saw all the time, rabbits and things, and constantly in our yard in front of our house, and there, everything's gone, hadn't seen them in months, nothing in months since all that construction happened. I mean, it's just, everything has gone negative since, basically since all those townhomes and the traffic got so bad. I mean, it's, you, it was, it was such a nice place and nice area, and I just hate to see, I can't even imagine what it's going to look like, you know, in five years if all, everything goes through that people want to do. There's a, it's a really high-demand area, and there's a lot more projects, I'm sure, just waiting to happen because of it, you know, the property value and just a great area to live in, convenient and close to everything. But I'd just like to see it, things slow down a little bit. Again, this will just, I mean, this will basically ruin our area right there where we live, if nothing else for the traffic, but for everything. I'd just like to see things slow down, and, you know, and I would really love to see this thing not happen right now because things have already been going way too fast. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right, would anyone else like to speak for or against RZ 24-06?
Good evening, my name is Mark Black, and I live at 590 East Howell Road, which is right there, and the proposed area is basically in my wife and mine's backyard. And we have been living there since 1997, she and I. We have one daughter, and we have a son. They no longer live with us, but it's still, whenever we do get old, and, you know, we had every intent to pass it on to the kids because of where we were at. We had the open field, plenty of room to run, play, soccer, baseball, basketball, all that. But ever since, like, the townhome things across the road, I've had to replace my mailbox four times for the dump trucks just running over them and knocking them down. You've got a litter problem now on that street, bags of trash, stuff thrown in my ditch, and also at the same time, the traffic on that road. These trucks, I mean, they're, I've got 18-wheelers running down through the front of the house, dump trucks, one of them even ran over one of our cats. And the reason, like, you know, we are out in a rural area, so we like a slower pace and, you know, just have the room for the kids, grandkids to run and play, and we would like to see it stay the way it is, not really, and not wanting a large group of several families in our backyard. We've been there since 97, and we'd like to keep it the way it is, so we oppose.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir. Thank you for your time.
All right, sir, I believe in the blue, I saw your hand come up next.
Sam Peter Kelsey, and my wife Starla and I live at 540 East Howell Road, that's right here, back up to both of those properties. And I would just, ditto to everything that's been said so far about the quality of life and all of that. And something different is when, I hope they were doing an environmental study of some sort before they start clearing a bunch of land here, because when, we, I was asleep at the wheel when you, those townhouses went up, and they did a heck of a lot of blasting there, and that altered, that shifted. My property, my backyard is now full of ruts and things, because there's a granite vein that runs all the way through there, and I hope they know what they're doing. And plus, the water runoff, if you get a big rain, the water, this creek rises, we get some flooding here, and I'm just concerned that the, a lot more development there is going to cause more environmental problems, and who, I don't know. I didn't expect the blasting from the, that it was going to affect my backyard, but it did, and I don't know what else to expect. But I would just also agree with what else has been said, and thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. All right, sir, I believe back there I had you, your hand up next in the red. Did you have your hand up, sir? You did not? Okay. Yes, ma'am, come up.
I'm Michelle Hoff. My husband and I live at 580 East Howell Road, so I'm not tall enough to point like everybody else, but over there. And just a few points, we moved down here specifically, kind of what everybody else is saying, for the quiet neighborhood, you know, not a, not a large neighborhood. We have neighbors, but nothing too extreme, which is what, you know, the proposed development is. And looking at it, it really, in reviewing some of the traditional neighborhood zoning parameters, a couple of things that come to our attention is there, you know, there would be a very much a nuisance due to the change in the look and the feel, and the area in which we all chose to buy this house and people built those houses. It would definitely be a nuisance to that. Additionally, it would be kind of detrimental to the whole area itself based on, as people spoke about with wildlife and things like that, so I won't, some people already touched on that, but I just wanted to highlight that. But additionally, in the description, it says, "For a traditional neighborhood to be in a traditional city neighborhood setting," and you probably are at a point where you can define that, but just something to think about. What is the definition of a city neighborhood setting? Because when you look at, like, parameters, the area in which we are does not already have that, and if that's what you're looking to change, what would that look like? And again, to the nuisance and detriment to the rest of us in the area that we're already in, that would be an issue. With the 50 homes, which would mean, you know, two cars, two cars a minimum, you know, this day and age probably even more, would be an additional 100 cars on the road, which you already have a busy three rows between Abner Creek, East Howell, and Joe Leonard. My husband and I in our house, many of us have been run off the road already by, you know, cars and trucks, even East Howell isn't as big. I mean, Joe Leonard definitely is not for two-way, but East Howell is not very big, and the road itself is already broken down. Like, in front of our house, we even have pictures yesterday, there's chunks of road that are stuck there, and people are driving, and they feel like coming to a halt. We've had to replace the mailbox, you know, things of that nature. People use it as cut-throughs, and even though they mentioned it would be an emergency access onto Joe Leonard, people will still use that even though it's not the main one. And then I would echo the environmental studies, not only from the wildlife in the area, but as Peter mentioned, the water runoff, and the 25-foot buffer is not a very, it might sound large, but when you think about, if you come out, like, look at our yards, 25 feet is not a nice buffer to be able to keep the ambiance of what the original intent was, where we all have our homes there. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am, thank you. All right, yes, sir.
Hey, good evening, my name is Luis Oliver Cruz. We just purchased a lot at 256 Joel Leonard about two years ago. I'm a U.S. Navy veteran. I'm retiring at the end of July of this year. Served this great country for 20 years. We fled Florida for the same issue that we are now hearing here today. The concern I hear throughout the room is just, no, the gentleman here proposed increasing the quality, where truthfully, the only thing that will be increased is their pocket. I'm just going to say how it is. It's not to offend nobody, but everybody here has a family and has dedicated their whole life, you know, to this area, to this environment, you know, the rural area, the look of it. We already touched on safety, we already touched on family, on the value. Nobody's going to gain from this. Nobody's life here on this side is going to be improved by this neighborhood. The roads' condition are not going to get better. My son, who's sitting over there, who's only five years old, he won't be able to play at Joel Leonard no more, which was my intention. After 20 years, I've been running away from my whole life, anxiety, depression, and I come to this now. I purchased this land with that dream, to finally build a house there with these great people. My dream is going to get crushed again. I got to run away again because some people decide that this is good, and I don't want to ruin their dreams, but yet again, you have the dreams of one, they're going to deter the dreams of many. The world's getting scary out there. Every time you turn on the news, there's something negative that happens, and it's people with big money that come, and they ruin neighborhoods just like this, and they tell you the same thing. It's not going to improve the neighborhood at all. I seen it already, the little bit of time that I've been there, it's only going to get worse. These people are going to suffer, their livelihood, the way that they have their life set up is going to just get to be, you know, worsened by this development. I strongly oppose this development.
Thank you, sir. Thank you for your service. All right, yes, ma'am.
My name is Susan Davidson. I'm here with my husband, Mark. We own the property at 712 and 716 Abner Creek Road, which borders Joe Leonard right up here at the corner above the, just right above that line on the right, so we are bordered with Joe Leonard Road. I can't add too much to what everybody else has said, thank you for letting me speak today, but I want to tell you this. If you don't know me, let me tell you who I am. I'm your neighbor. That's who I am. I'm your neighbor. I'm these people's neighbor. Can I have everybody that's with us tonight from Abner Creek and Joe Leonard just raise your hand or stand up? This group came together in this chamber in 2012 for the exact same issue. These people stood together for the same issue on Joe Leonard Road, and we came together, and that development did not happen. That property remained rural. We have stayed together with changes, we have diversity in our neighborhood, but these are your neighbors, and we have stayed together since 2012 to defend our way of life, and I know a man has a right to do what he wants to with his property. I understand that, and I respect that, I do. But we also promote community in Greer. We want cohesion, we want community, we want people to find a place in Greer that's their way. I've been at that property since 1995, and I bought it from the Dillard fam, well, the folks that bought it from the Dillards, so that's been right there a long time in this community. And we have carved that kind of community in Greer out in that neighborhood, and I want to ask you, please, out of respect of our neighborhood and all the things that people said, "We can't come in here with millions of dollars." We don't have it, we're just your neighbor. We just raise our kids out there. I work for Greenville County Schools. We don't have millions of dollars to throw at a neighborhood. It's just us. We're just your neighbor. But I want to ask you to respect us, please, and at least keep it zoned suburban and not traditional, and let's keep that density down. We, we want to welcome you neighbors in our community, but not like this. We want them to integrate and be part of us, but not overwhelm us, and please just respect us as your neighbor. We can't, we can't fight, we can't, this is the best we can do, and we'd like to welcome people, but please come to our neighborhood. Don't drag us into downtown Greenville neighborhood. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, ma'am. All right, is there anyone else that would like to speak for or against RZ 24-06?
Hi, I'm Lisa Fidewa, and I'm here with my husband Doug Fidewa. We live at 220 Joe Leonard. We are that triangle right there with the two dots on it. This whole thing is two sides. 50% of our property will be looking at other people's homes and activities when we have a line of trees behind us right now. The access road is a concern for us because it will be neighboring our property. I have little grandchildren that run around and ride their bikes on that, on that street, and already I have to stand in the street with them in case a big truck from, who's getting off Abner Creek and trying to quick-cut through, comes through, and I have to watch them for that. We have runoff problems already since some of the other things going on, so I'm very concerned about that. I understand that people have a right to do what they want with their land, but we moved here five years ago purposely to be in the rural area, like everybody else. We are concerned also, we are just blue-collar workers. We get up early, and we come home at 5:00, 5:30. It's, it takes me, and I work literally eight miles from the house, it takes me 35 minutes to get there every day. Takes me almost 45 to get home. The traffic is unbelievable at those times of days when your blue-collar workers got to go to and from their jobs. Abner Creek gets backed up, we've got trucks coming. I was run off the road the other day just trying to get up my street so I could get to my house, and the person flipped me off. I mean, I don't know where these people are coming from, but it's young kids, bunch of, you know, probably living in these big neighborhoods that are all over. The traffic coming off from, by BMW over there with those huge neighborhoods coming down Abner Creek, what just one year ago took me just 20 minutes to get to work has almost doubled my commute in the morning just because I have to wait to get onto Abner Creek. I just would ask you to consider opposing this and to think of the bigger impact here that it's having for all of us, safety for our families in traffic as well as, I mean, this is not something my husband and I want to look at. It's, half of my property will be gone, so, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. All right, anyone else would like to speak for or against RZ 24-06? All right, seeing none, we'll close the public hearing for RZ 24-06, and we will move on to, flip the page here.
We actually don't have a public hearing for the preliminary plot, so it'll be new business.
That will just be us voting up or down on that?
Yep.
Okay. So in that case, we will move on to the new business portion of the meeting. During this time, we will vote on the business that is before us tonight. We are voting to make a recommendation to city council. These particular items that are before us tonight will be before council, will it be next week, or will it not be until June?
Preliminary plot will not go to council, but this rezoning, first reading, will be next Tuesday, the 28th, at 6:30.
Okay, so the rezoning for this piece of property, RZ 24-06, will come before council next Tuesday night in this room at 6:30? We are just making a recommendation. Council will make the... Council will make the decision whether the rezoning actually takes place, okay? So they typically have a first reading, and then they, by law, they have to have a second reading. So I would encourage you, no matter how this works out tonight, to come to council. Let your voice be heard there. I appreciate everybody coming tonight. A lot of these meetings, we don't have anybody here. We're here by ourselves. So with that being said, with the new business portion, we will be discussing amongst ourselves and with staff and with the applicant. And we may even have a question for some of you that are here tonight that have raised concerns about this property, but there won't be any back and forth between us and the audience, okay? Because that time has passed. That's during the public hearing portion, and you've been allowed to speak. So with that being said, we're gonna open the new business portion for RZ 24-06.
Once again, this is RZ 24-06. The addresses are 538 Abner Creek Road and 180 Joe Leonard Road. The existing zoning is rural residential, and the request is to rezone to traditional neighborhood. Here's the aerial of the property. Here's the zoning map. Here's the future land use. Here are the current conditions at both properties. Once again, the request is to rezone to traditional neighborhood. The surrounding zoning and land uses are residential, and staff recommends approval.
Okay, thank you. All right, fellas, y'all wanna come back up to the podium? You've heard the concerns from the residents that live in this area. Is there anything that you can let them know, you know, can you, can you answer any of these concerns?
There was a, there was a good question that, that came up from the gentleman who's getting out of the military that, you know, what, what do the neighbors have to gain? And, and, you know, we can talk about the normal things, like, you know, this is, this is gonna be a very high-quality product, you know, it's, it's gonna look great, it's gonna raise property values in the surrounding areas. But based on the concerns that I've heard from everybody else that spoke, a lot of that spoke to environmental concerns, flooding concerns, traffic concerns, and, and really the look and feel of, of the, the area as it sits. To begin, you know, from an environmental standpoint, we, we have done our homework. We are aware of the rock that's out there and where it's at. In regard to the flooding, this development actually will improve the flooding and drainage issues on downstream properties. It's hard to see. You won't be able to see it, but if you can kinda tell in the pasture, there's, there's a drawl to the southeast of that house. All of that water comes off of that site and leaves through that swell. A lot of it goes through parcel nine, or, excuse me, 590, and a lot of it go through these other parcels here at the corner of East Howell. Well, when we develop a piece of property, we're not allowed to put stormwater off onto other people's properties. We will have storm drain infrastructure that will actually cut off all of the stormwater, or I don't wanna say all of it, but the majority, above 90% of the stormwater, that is currently leaving the property. So it'll actually improve that. You know, another, another thing that I wanted to discuss is, is the look and the feel and the wildlife and the country, country feel that this site currently has. And I'll, and I'll agree with you in, in the fact that, you know, it's, they've got horses out there. They've used that property to do whatever they want to do with horses. But if you look at the aerial, there's actually very little vegetation. This development coming in will put more vegetation out there than is currently there. And I know there was a comment regarding wildlife as well. There's, there's, there's nowhere for wildlife to live on this property. But as we come in and we spend the money on landscape material for buffers around the property, because you can't just build a nice house. You gotta invest money in landscape, or it, it doesn't look right. It doesn't look good. So as you buffer around those properties, you plant shrubs, small trees, birds starting to make nests, wildlife actually starts to come back and use those buffers. So in that sense, I believe we are improving this area. Traffic, traffic is always a concern with every development. As I stated before, Joe Leonard is not an acceptable road to, to put development out on right now unless they were willing to spend way more than they would need, want to, to improve it. We're also not coming out on the East Howell Road because there is more curvature in the road, and that's not a safe road to come out on to. So our one access is Abner Creek. I've went on site, measured the site distance myself. I feel confident with that access point and believe it is the most appropriate access point.
Based on your preliminary observations, where do you anticipate your entrance to be to this property?
So it's hard to tell, but you can faintly see the driveway, the existing house on 538. It's, it's, it's coming in at that exact point.
Okay. And as far as Joe Leonard is concerned for emergency access only, how will you keep cars from coming on up in there?
Typically, those are gated. We work, and we have yet to have our pre-submital meeting with staff. That'd kinda be the next step, depending on how tonight goes. But we'll meet with staff, pre-submital meeting, figure out what would be the most appropriate for emergency services in this area. But typically, you know, you have a gate, Knox Box, and, you know, there's some kind of grass, textile grid, or something that supports those vehicles coming in and out. And then the gate, you know, obviously to, to not let people use it as they wish.
Okay. So this has not come to pass yet?
No.
What about a traffic study? Is this still a flag or traffic study?
We are, we are not close to triggering, based off the density, the requirement of a traffic study. Again, I guess with, with this being a DOT road, but, you know, we'll certainly discuss with staff if there's any possibilities that we could do, or if they have any ideas to improve the safety of that access.
Based on density, do you have any numbers in front of you? And I just ran some numbers real quick. Based on the current zoning, which is rural, rural residential, how many lots would you be able to cut up and put on there?
I haven't explored it. We, when I started in the project, I had a, you know, very quick discussion with staff. I was actually looking at it with another developer who, who wanted to do townhomes. So realizing the zoning, quickly went to staff, and, you know, based on those discussions, we just, we never looked at the RR.
All right, just, just for everyone's knowledge, and I, and these are very rough numbers, but based on these parcels being about 25 acres combined, if we left this at traditional neighborhood and...
Rural residential.
Rural residential, excuse me. And a minimum lot area for rural residential is 20,000 square feet. I took about 20% out for roads and common area.
Yep.
And we would still be able to put 43 lots on this property. He's proposing a different zoning, but with 50 lots.
Yes, sir.
Seven more houses. By right, 43 houses anyway. So just be aware of your concerns and be, be knowledgeable of the difference and the restraint that they have, because by right, if, if things were different, they could put a lot more houses on us. So I, I just wanna compare that so that everyone is understanding of, of what the rights of property already are, because it's, it's not, it's not gonna be a farm much longer, and neither of the other houses across the street from you and down the road. This is, I mean, I don't wanna be insensitive, but this is a, this is a problem that Greer has, and the problem is growth, and growth brings more homes and more people and more jobs and more shops, and it happens. And the only thing we can say is, if you don't like it, buy it. And if you wanna keep the farm, buy the farm. So I, I just, at, at 43 houses already, this is not, it's not outrageous to, to propose 50 with this different zoning.
And if this was a townhome subdivision, it'd be a lot more.
250.
250, easily. And that, you, you multiply that by two cars for each townhome, or possibly more, and traffic is bad. It's bad everywhere.
Everywhere.
85 is a disaster. I drive it weekly between here and Charlotte. It's horrible. It's better than it was, believe it or not, two years ago, and there are more people here than there were two years ago. Abner Creek, part of Abner Creek is in the city limits, but the majority of it is in Spartanburg County. And the people that are speeding and running you off the road, you need to call Highway Patrol and call Spartanburg County Sheriff's Office and ask them to send somebody out to patrol these areas, because I'm sure they're using it as a cut through. They probably don't even live in this area. But that's a concern that we've had over the years, but there's not much the city can do about it if the city, you know, doesn't have control of that, of that road. And the majority of that road, we don't have control of. And this area is developing, and it's gonna continue to develop with the hospital now that they've got the Gibbs Cancer Center down there. That area several years ago was coined the, the golden box, I believe is what they called it, before the last downturn in the economy, or before COVID. And things have slowed down a little bit there, but things are starting to come back. And it's just gonna continue, because this, everybody wants to be here. You folks that have been here about 10 years, you came here, you, you fled other areas that were, this was happening. It's happening here, and we understand. I've been here all my life. When I was growing up, there were 3,000 people living in the city of Greer, and now there are 50,000 people living in the city of Greer. And it's just gonna continue to grow. So, you know, Greer used to have the problems down Trade Street, down Randall Street, all the businesses were boarded up. Everybody was out of business. And now, there is no available space in downtown Greer for people to have a shop or a small business, or a medium-sized business. And these are the, the good kind of problems, but we also have to deal with the influx of folks that are coming in. And Greer can't build schools, and Greer cannot build roads because we don't have control of either. Greenville County has control of the schools on the Greenville County side, and Spartanburg, I think it's District Five on the Spartanburg County side. We have no control over that. We do have a special meeting that takes place with the developers of the city, and they bring all these people together. And to my knowledge, no one has said from the school district or from DOT, "Stop," have they? They haven't said to slow down and let us catch up. It hadn't happened yet. Now, one day it probably will, but that time is not today. And, you know, we have to go on what we have, laws and rules and plans that are in place for the growth, and we're trying to do a good job of managing that. And I know sometimes it looks, it looks bad, but it, it could really be a lot worse if the city didn't have the handle on things that they do. Do you have anything else you can add from the, the folks that, any of their concerns that they had?
Um, I'll, I'll add this, I'll add this one item. The, the first speaker who lives adjacent to this property, I, I would like to mention that part of the purchase agreement for the 180 parcel is to maintain a 35-foot buffer off of parcel 170 specifically. So we did, I know that was mentioned, we're, we're trying to take an extra step there to, to make sure we provide an adequate buffer to those folks.
What's the required buffer? 25 feet?
No, it'd be 10 to 15.
10 to 15? But you're proposing a 25-foot?
35.
35?
Yes, sir.
Around the entire development?
No, sir, just, just around parcel 170, Joe Leonard Road.
What about the rest of the development?
So the, the rest of the development, we're, we're maintaining about a 20. So we're about a 20 to 25-foot buffer, starting from that point, probably running somewhere up right there, and then starts to get a little bit bigger as you run up, run up Joe Leonard.
Okay.
What about those three of Abner Creek? What's the buffer?
Um... We have a, so I have a conceptual pond location in that area. We would be, we would be happy to maintain a similar 25-foot buffer off of those three properties, consistent with, with the other lots where we're...
Okay. But they're only required 10 to 15?
Mm-hmm.
All right. Now, the gentleman that was talking about his property has shifted due to blasting. Can you raise your hand, sir? Are you gonna have to do any blasting on this property?
So we've got kind of a, a small area of real concern, which is kind of where the existing house is at 538. Based off of test pits we dug, where actually the three of us were on site, we were getting down to about six feet before we started hitting that, that gray dirt. So we're, we're gonna have to be mindful of it. We have, thankfully, with a custom builder, we have a little bit more flexibility to do, you know, crawl spaces, things like that, allow us to work with the grade some. So the idea is to work around it.
So if they have to blast, the city, the fire department, even the county fire department does not issue blasting permits. That is done at the state level, and they have to be bonded when they do that. And so if any damage occurs, because this came up earlier this year, up the road about a mile, then they're bonded to take care of any damage that comes to properties in the surrounding area. Is that, is that correct, Ashley?
That is correct.
Okay. Does anybody on the commission have any further comments or questions for the developer or staff?
Do you, do you have any idea of the square footage of the houses typically average?
35.
Yes, sir.
You mentioned the lot size earlier, but what were your...
75 by 150.
75 by 150?
This is a typical, air feud, that are different.
Will this development have any amenities, pool, clubhouse, anything like that? You gonna have room for any of that?
Not at this time, no, sir.
Okay.
Like a quality development.
I'm sorry?
That sounds like a quality development, so...
You wanna ask a question or not?
No.
Um, yeah, I'm gonna allow you to ask a question to us.
Yes, sir. For a while we use people on my, I apologize. This, this, it seems like the committee have their minds made up before we just show up here. There was nothing said favorable in this group, or, or they just accounted as, and be cautious of how I say it. There was no road study, safety road study have been made, still be agenda from you guys' part. If you guys are gonna go ahead and do this, at least fleet, and that the road is not big enough there, and there's our role, that road needs to be expanded, so it's my role to develop this, because you guys are gonna do what you guys are gonna do. We're just here because we care about our neighborhood. And there's no space in the building. I live on Joe, my Joe Leonard, there's no point if you put an emergency exit through there, you are gonna go from there, even, even, even just to cut through around, they're just gonna do it.
No, sir, they will not. That is emergencies, and that was, that's not for like if you need an ambulance or they need the police. It's more like if the neighborhood catches on fire and the fire department needs to get in there because they can't access from Abner Creek. It, it's not that kind of access, and it will be closed off with a gate or...
The HOA doesn't have a key.
Yeah, they, yeah, that's right.
The police department doesn't have a key. The fire department's the only one with a key.
That's right. That's right.
Those, those locks are purchased through a company that delivers the, the lock itself to the developer, and the key goes to the fire department. The developer can't even put the, the lock on the gate.
I understand that. And, and they'll, and they'll be, they'll be developed in landscape to the fact that you can't get around the gate to get, to get around it. I mean, it won't happen. That's not...
I mean, it won't happen. That's not what they're for.
If there's traffic coming up Joe Leonard, you need to call local law enforcement and say, hey, they're coming up.
Their intent is not to disturb Joe Leonard or add traffic to Joe Leonard. They've been clear about that. If Joe Leonard is a problem right now, it's, it's not going to be any more of a problem. It sounds like Joe Leonard's a problem and Joe Leonard needs to be addressed as a problem. And that's a Spartanburg County road. Thank.
Is it?
Or is it DOT?
It's not the city's inventory, so.
I believe it's county.
It's county. So.
Mr. Germer, you ready to vote? You ready for a motion?
Do we have any further questions of the applicant or staff? Do we have a motion?
Move to approve.
We have a motion for approval. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Let's vote.
Ms. Jones?
No.
Mr. Lavender?
Yes.
Mr. Lamb?
Yes.
Mr. Holland?
Yes.
All right. Contact staff for next steps. And folks, I encourage you to come to council next week. Speak to the council folks that are here, that are going to be here. Come early. Sign up if you'd like to speak. Yes, sir.
If they get the zoning changed and to the traditional neighborhood, they go belly up and you've already changed it, does that mean the next person can come in and put 250 homes? Because you've already approved it as traditional?
Well, it's not 250 homes, but it, it could be, it could be 170 homes.
Could be 170.
Or it could be 250 potential townhomes.
Does it make it easier for the next person to do that because we've done it already?
It is already zoned that way, so the zoning would have to be changed. Okay. All right. So folks, I'm going to ask you if you want to talk, to please go out in the lobby because we're still conducting city business. If you're going to have discussion, please go to the lobby. Thank you. All right. Now this brings us to plat review for 24-02.
Yes, this is PP 24-02. The address is North Dobson Road. The parcel ID numbers for the record are 9-03-00-056.00, and 9-03-00-056.02. The existing zoning is medium-density residential and the request is preliminary plat approval. This is Monarch Grove Townhomes. They are located on North Dobson Road and it consists of 156 townhomes. They have, I believe, about 256 parking spaces, somewhere in that neighborhood. I think it's, it's two spaces per unit and then they have about 38 guest spaces. Staff recommends approval.
How many units?
156. And I may be slightly wrong on those parking numbers. I don't have my other notes, so that's just what I remember.
Yeah, 156.
Yep, 156. And this is a smaller piece of property than the one we just dealt with.
It is. And if you'll, if it looks familiar, it came through as an annexation with three parcels for medium-density for an apartment complex, and they have decided to do townhomes instead.
Okay.
So they're not here tonight to represent themselves?
They're here.
Yeah, they're here.
Come on up, ladies. Hope somebody was here.
Yeah, so give us a little spill.
Absolutely. My name is Chrissy Drake. I'm a Blue Water Civil Design, the engineer on the project. I also have Christina with me as well from Contender Development, who's the developer for the property.
Your address, please, for the record.
718 Louncheal Road, Greenville. And just to follow up on the parking note, so we actually provided a site data table. So the requirements are two and a half spaces per unit and you can use a garage and your driveway as a space. So that's two spaces already provided per unit. So we provide a half space extra, which is why we have about 80 off-street parking spaces. So I know that was a major concern whenever the regs were being redone about making sure there was enough parking in townhome developments. We've got some buffers on the top side of the property adjacent to the residential, which is a type-two landscape buffer. We've also got a buffer along its Durham Road. And there's commercial across the street from that. It's actually one of the dealerships right there off of Wade Hampton is that location. And then at the bottom of the plat, you can see that we've actually, we're actually dedicating future right-of-way for the realignment of North Dobson. Contender along with City Agri and a couple of the dealership owners are working together, agreement of realigning North Dobson and Durham Road to eventually be a lighted intersection and a safer intersection, working with DOT on that. So that is why we're providing that future right-of-way and we've got a couple of stages in process of road improvements that we need to do.
We have an estimated timeframe of when that's going to happen? If we had to draw a number out of a magic well?
So I will, I will say that I know that Contender and the other property owners are working together, getting a meeting so that they can get an agreement pulled together of who's paying what in the realignment. So DOT, all they're going to be doing is providing the light once we do the realignment. I can't estimate that light, but I can tell you it's our intent to go ahead and get that improvement done upfront with our development.
Is Durham Road still being used to bring cars in and out to the dealership down there or are they still? And will that continue once this development is?
If the realignment happens, no.
Go away, won't it?
No, Durham Road would just come out onto Dobson.
Is it okay?
It would go out to North Dobson instead of down at that intersection where they come in together.
Meeting last year when all this came to us initially.
It would have to be more difficult for an 18-wheeler to pull into that lighted intersection and take a hard right.
Right.
But I don't know how far, depends on how far back off of it and how wide that site triangle is too.
So you're going to have up in the northeast corner, is that an emergency access?
That's right. It's an emergency access.
Okay. And then at the end of each of these streets, is it going to be wide enough? Is Fire Marshal Keely, is he pleased with the radius to turn around the engines and the ladder truck?
During PAC, we had to address some of his comments, so it is IFC-rated turnarounds.
Very good.
Okay, so it's 156 units?
Yes, sir.
So you got two and a half per, so you got 390 parking spots?
We have 392.
392, that's even better.
Well, they're counting the garage as a parking space.
What you, what you want? What's it work for three people?
Well, typically these driveways are at least double-sided driveways too. So if you've got a 20-foot wide unit, you're usually got a 16-foot wide driveway and people usually double park in that as well.
Drive away from the, from the street to the house.
So I will say from the right-of-way to the house, we provide 20 feet, so that way you don't have any overhang on your sidewalks.
Okay, so.
So at a maximum, it's probably 28 and a half feet.
Okay.
Sidewalks are clear.
That's right.
We got, we got a few parking spots, so we probably don't have too many shootings over parking.
Any amenities or anything?
No, we're just going to have just some open space, mainly surrounded by those parking areas where you're going to have your CBUs for your mail and there might be like some park benches or an open area for like a dog park.
Okay.
Very passive open space.
Okay. All right. Ashley, you're, you're good with everything you've seen?
Yes.
You too.
They'll still complete a site development plan review, so everything will be designed to city standards.
Okay. Do we have a recommendation from the board?
Requesting man approval.
We have a recommendation for approval. And we have a second. Let's vote, please.
Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Lavender?
Yes.
Mr. Lamb?
Yes.
Mr. Holland?
Yes. All right. Contact staff for next step. Sorry we took you so long.
Sorry, you went first.
I know, I'm sorry. Thank you, guys.
Yes, thank you. Okay, this will end the new business portion of the meeting. Do we have any other business? Planning and staff report? You had mentioned that you wanted to share something with us.
I was going to. Do you guys want to see a quick residential update or would you rather save it for mid-year?
I'll leave that up to you guys.
Knock it out.
Okay. So this is just a really quick residential update. You want to switch?
Sure.
So when we did PAC.
I can't read that fast.
I'm sorry, I had to go back to the beginning. It was at the end for some reason.
Oh, man.
I'm going to go over it. Last time we did the PAC update, we also did residential, but since there were so many cases, we, we did not do that. So this is March 2023 through April of this year, so that is a little over a year. This is just a chart that shows housing starts over the last decade. So you can see we kind of had our peak in 2021, dipped a little bit in 22, and then kind of back up healthy but not exorbitant last year. And I, I honestly don't know where we're tracking.
We're almost back to pre-COVID levels, though.
Yes.
Yeah.
I would say we are. So as far as residential development, we signed 12 plats in 2023 for almost 1,000 lots. Again, that's Bentley Manor, Blue Ridge Cottages. There's a pretty good mix of townhomes and single-family in that. And then so far in 2024, we've signed five plats for 347 lots. Donahue Hill and Maple Creek Reserve are both single-family and then Leo Jamestown is that kind of quirky townhome duplex rental community right across from Mutts. And so they've gotten phases one through three and they actually submitted all their permits yesterday for phase four. So they'll be coming soon with that. And we have 21 active neighborhoods. We usually have between 15 and 22-ish. Usually when one kind of gets closer to close out, we get some more signed plats. So they kind of range in how far developed they are. Obviously, 0% CO'd all the way to almost 90.
So Blue Ridge Plantation has four, it looks like?
Yeah, they have Lakeside Phase One and Two are still active with permits, although not many. And then Blue Ridge Cottages, which are the little, they're townhomes, but they're sets of two and they're right in front of Lakeside off Gross Meadow.
What about the main neighborhood on the other side of Gross Meadow?
They are currently the final plat for Nina Meadows, which is Phase Three, Zone Three. Zone Three. Is, the final plat is under review. And then the site development plan for Phase 3B is also under review. And anything after 3B, they're going to start triggering road improvements and the amenity center.
Right.
So.
So they'll drag their feet on that one?
Well, let's hope.
Possibly.
Those people have been waiting a long time for their amenities.
And then again, this is sort of just what's on the horizon. Again, we have Nina Meadows Phase One, which is Blue Ridge Plantation. That one's under review. And then there are five or six that are grading. And then we have, you know, four to five that have had their SDP approved but haven't moved to grading yet. And then we have a variety under review and then we have several that have just gone through PAC, including what you guys saw tonight. Monarch Grove is in that, that first one in the orange category. And then the Kissed Road just rezoned, you know, to single-family last month. And then the other ones are future build-out of kind of our big neighborhoods, Blue Ridge Plantation, Brookside Farms and O'Neil Village. So that's what kind of could be on the horizon in the next three to five years. But as you all know, some fall off, some new ones come in. But that's kind of where we stand. And then as far as apartments go, in '23 and the beginning of '24, they CO'd Ryder Junction, Vinings at Brushy Creek, Project Homecoming over there, Parkview Downtown, and then the Shoals off Gibbs Shoals Road for a little under 900 units. Currently, Greer Mill and Parkview Phase Two are both kind of under construction. And so that'll be another 162 units. And then we have kind of a variety of apartments that are under review.
So Parkview, they're building another building currently?
They are. On the bottom is going to be a restaurant and then there are 12 units on top.
Someone told me they're going to put a pool in, is that correct?
They are putting a pool in. It is.
Is this Parkview?
It is very small and very shallow in the middle of the parking lot, but it is a pool.
So.
There's a pool there now?
No, they're.
It's under construction.
Phase Three?
Well, it's, I mean, it's. I'm not sure how far along.
So do we have an idea how many people are living there now? Because I've noticed that there's some lights on in the evening and I see some cars. Not yet.
There are people living there. I see them out walking their dogs at lunch.
Good.
Yeah, they're fully CO'd, but I don't know if they're actually occupied.
Right.
They probably are. Most anything around here, it can be occupied, gets occupied pretty quick.
And that, that's all.
All right.
Happy to answer any questions you guys have, but we will, we will, we have reminders now and we will try to do this quarterly, so it's much quicker.
That's awesome. Anything further for the good of the commission? We have a motion for adjournment?
To adjourn.
We stand adjourned.